Hey, regular meeting of the Wilson County Attorney's Board Thursday, December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve.
I'm watching Tuesday.
The on session. Is he with you?
Oh, we're fine. We're cool.
You are in heaven. I will be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily breath and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, providing the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Yes, I do. The public comment sheet. Mr. Gerhardt is here. Oh, okay. That's all right.
This is for the period.
Since he's got in the movies, it's been real difficult.
This is for the public hearing.
Public comment, we have Jeremiah Kennedy. Okay. And Ethan Campbell. Want to make a public comment? Let me have y'all give us more. Item three, test of completion. Item four, Russell Wilson County Attorney.
Is Russell gonna be here?
Yeah. Do you want me to call him?
But it's under located item?
Five, with four and five, item A is four and five. Consider and take action on amending recreational obedience. And we got that as a way to wait for him. Item six, discuss and take action on opposing county officers on Monday, December third, first, two thousand and twelve, New Year's Eve.
I'll make that motion. I don't know if we need to discuss with you.
In discussion. Motion, Commissioner Wiley, second. Commissioner Morales, all in favor?
Aye.
Item seven, renew and approve appointment of Larry Phillips to a two-year term of Commissioner of ESD number two.
He's here, not that he needs to say anything. Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
We do appreciate your service, sir.
Thank you.
I've interviewed him, talked to Commissioner Gomes about him, and we both thank you as kind gentlemen, so I'd like to make that motion.
Motion, Commissioner Wiley, second. Commissioner Gomes, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item eight, Edmond Baker, up in public safety. Item A, burn ban, fire works, county approved.
We are, at this point, under the five hundred, but due to fire behavior that I've seen over the, since the last commissioner's court meeting, there are areas that we really do need a burn ban in, and there's areas that could be up to the commissioner. It's up to y'all whether you do parts or all of the county.
How do they take that meeting? I mean, how?
Well, the problem, it's a, KBDI has to do with rainfall rates.
What I'm saying is, in the last two days, it's deteriorated a bunch. You know, I mean, it's dry as a tire tag across the county.
The main, the main thing is, is that is a summertime fire rating, is fire, drought rating. It's not a winter time. Our grasses are dead and dormant, and that puts a whole new spin on it. You know, my suggestion would be do the whole county, recommendation, we do the whole county, and we can work with the areas where they are not as dry as others on burning.
Motion, Commissioner Fowles, second. Commissioner Gomes, all in favor?
Didn't burn it, then you know that coming New Year's Eve, we're gonna have a lot of camp fires.
Camp fires will or will not, unless, unless we want to specifically say they're not. What is y'all's view on?
They're legal.
They are legal, as long as there's somebody there and, you know, being dealt with properly. Now, you get twenty-three mile an hour winds or higher, and that will fall under the red flag warning, and they're no longer legal as far as, there's, there's reports, you know, each property owner, if they have damage caused by another, have a court, have the recourse of going to civil court.
We gotta know that, just, they're pretty big calls.
Yeah. I send this to Johnny, and I'll probably try to get it to dispatch also, because I know a lot of times the deputies will call in and ask dispatch, are we under a burn ban? Can they do this? And they'll have that information available to them.
What about fireworks?
There's nothing we can do about fireworks. That ended the fifteenth, unless we declare a disaster and go in to get a request from the governor for sixty hours, I think it is, and then you ask for an extension. You know, the fifteenth of December is the last day you can.
The governor's out by the trench, campfire somewhere.
Yeah. We had one, for sure, fireworks-related fire, and it was sparklers, a kid standing in the road, you know, and spark blew over into some high grass and put it on fire. It was two acres, as all the parts. We've been able to control them to an extent. There's been a few that have bad access or hard access, and we had issues with, but for the most part, quick notification and quick responses kept the fires from getting large fast.
Fire department did a heck of a job Christmas Day, because we had all of that wind, and we almost had one, we had one that could've really been bad.
There was maybe. I think we had five fires Christmas Day, and every one of them were containing, the largest one that I'm aware of was an eighteen acre fire on three oh five.
Well, then it's.
Three thirty-one.
Three thirty-one, two hundred acres there.
Another two hundred acres?
Well, the one, the original.
Yeah, the original one, yeah, but that was, I'm going with just Christmas Day.
Christmas Day, this was before Christmas.
Okay, moving on to item B, amend budget, transfer money from fire training to EPAC, E-Dispatch, forty-four hundred, ninety-six dollars.
Yes, sir, I had to put that back on there because we didn't approve that much to pay, and I told y'all, they, they estimated it to be around forty-four hundred or a little less, well, it turned out a little more.
There's eight thousand in that budget right now.
Is what?
Eight thousand in the budget for the training.
Motion, Commissioner Fowles, Mr. Gomes, all in favor?
Aye.
It does work, by the way.
You gonna take any apart?
Item C, discuss approved changes in the VFD EMS Assistant Agreement, Assistance Agreement with Wilson County.
Last commissioner's court y'all approved the, the contract or the assistance agreement with fire EMS, and Burna brought to me, the county attorney brought to me a request to change some wording, the wording being under review, and it's reviewed to have a certified public accountant.
It, it originally said that it needed to be audited by a certified public accountant. A lot of these little fire departments, they cannot afford that, so I asked him to change it to audit or review, which a review is a lot less expensive.
But it's still a certified public accountant does it. We have been allowing, you know, four or five people that had nothing to do with that department to review their bank account, their books and stuff, and sign off, this, this will take the place of that.
And it goes to you, or it goes to the county attorney?
I consider it to both of us. I get record of it, but I, I, I keep the record of it. In other words, I have, you know, file in case somebody wants me to look at it. But she will get what I get, because I'm not gonna, it's not me who's gonna do it to look at it, she'd have to look it over it, and seeing, I don't know, that she could want to once CPA reviewed it, is that something you'd want to review also?
Look at the letter, make sure there's no problems.
And she has a signature spot on the, on the assistance agreement, signed, signed off page, and she can sign off on them once she's reviewed her part of it.
That sounds good. Who need to go over that?
Motion, Mr. Gomes, second. Commissioner Morales, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number nine, public hearing, courthouse annex one, two, three, update comments and questions. I have no, but no information from anyone else. Anyone in the public wish to comment on the annexes?
We just need everybody's signature, and they already have, judge, it just needs to go through the table, and that's why we keep.
Item ten, approve bonds for elected officials. Jody Packett, junior sheriff, Dana Falwell, county attorney, Anna De Gonzalez, county tax assessor-collector, Albert Gamas, junior county commissioner precinct one, Ricky Morales, county commissioner precinct three, Martin Rodriguez, constable precinct one, Chad Clark, constable precinct two, Charles Coggins, constable precinct three, and Galen Zansky, constable precinct four. Motion, Commissioner Fowles, second. Commissioner Wiley, all in favor?
Aye.
Item eleven, review and approve viewpoint commissioners for ESD number three, Todd Dawson, August Mutchigama, Gaddy Aravazo, Kirby Aravazo, excuse me, Len Ray West, and Harry Wood. All those have agreed to it?
Yes, and I'd like to make the, the motion when we do it. I've interviewed all of these folks. It's a good group, group of people, are well qualified. Mr. Mitch Gomes is here today. These are folks that bring a variety of business skills to the board. We have a CPA, we have a member, personally, has been a member of the school board. We have, well, a couple of entrepreneurs. Len Ray West was the president of the appraisal district, so folks that understand business and will certainly understand what is necessary to organize ESD number three.
I love this, August Mutchigama may sell it, he's had a couple businesses up there.
Yes, sir, and Judge, I'm fairly certain he's gonna make a profit.
All right, motion, Commissioner Wiley, second. Commissioner Fowles, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all for serving.
Thank y'all. Thank you, sir.
Maybe they can stop and see if they can, they can get some paperwork and that different names.
All right, I'll contact each one individually.
Say that one every night.
Right. Okay, Mr. Gomes is here today, so I guess he could do it.
Just get them all together.
Okay.
That's, we'll get you to the board.
Okay, item twelve, consent, discuss and take action on resolution opposed to Texas Commission on Environmental Quality Application Number seven, one, zero, nine, two, six.
Okay.
I like your idea, you serve, you control them. I read something, I just keep, you know, something about, I remember, I do know what it is, a resolution to the state. I think more money. I'm pretty sure that's what it is, reimbursement, sending more funds because of oil-related repairs necessary to go.
Disposal, working disposal waste. Resolution opposed TCEQ application number seven, one, zero, nine, two, six. Whereas Wilson County has become aware that Gordon Clifford Swenson has applied to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality and under registration number seventy-one, seven, one, zero, nine, two, six, to dump domestic human waste from portable toilets and septic tanks, and whereas the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality is currently accepting written comments regarding Gordon Clifford Swenson permit, registration number seven, one, zero, nine, two, six, and whereas the dumping of domestic waste within Wilson County boundaries and within close proximity of residents presents a danger of public health and to the health of our population and could contaminate the drinking order, whereas the proposed final destination of domestic waste is lost from its origin. Now therefore, being resolved by the Wilson County Commissioners Court opposes the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality Application Number seventy-one, zero, nine, two, six, and asserts that said application should be denied. Motion, Commissioner Wiley, second. File, all in favor?
Aye.
Is waste from, from Austin somewhere?
So many truckloads a year, is what you do.
We had, similar to this number of years, Bill Salos was trying to put it out in the western part of the county.
They were.
They were putting it out, yeah.
Ninety-seven. And that's an area where there's a lot of runoff over there, too. Expecting a number of creeks.
Judge, I have a question. Judge, is this something that could come up again, or is this resolution gonna go to Austin to help negate the permit? Is that what you're arguing?
Yes, it's an opposition of, of issuing the permit.
So that's what the boys came from, they were looking at that on the internet last night and studying it and considering it.
Well, what it amounts to this, is an individual has like a hay farm over there, and this is a form of fertilizer, but it carries a lot of toxic and problems with it, supplies and so forth, so on. The people that live in that area are trying to get it, so they contacted us and asked them to go ahead and get their letters in and opposition and get us to copy their letters, and we do a resolution supporting the fact that we did not want it to be disposed of in the county, so it, it worked for us before, it was successful in the western part of the county, hopefully it will be again, so that's all.
That's exaggerated, too, Judge, to me, just by the fact that the gentleman owns property here, but he doesn't live on it.
Right.
And so he's gonna dump all of that, and then he's gonna live, you know, ninety miles away. He didn't remember the other stuff, when it, when it rained, it was particularly.
Yeah, and it was falling on the roadway as it was going to in front of location, and the thing was that people put it on properties that downstream from other property, even if not like a creek or anything, the water better run somewhere in the Washington.
And there's a lot of drainage over there. It's not like it's, there's creeks all over the place, and it floods whenever we get any kind of rain, but that road is always good.
And we wouldn't want missing this.
No. No, we wouldn't.
Item thirteen, discuss and take action on county road repair program resolution. Resolution, county road repair program, whereas Texas, South Texas is currently experiencing record oil and gas drilling activities as a result of the emergence of Eagle Ford shale play, whereas the new drilling and exploration technology has tremendously increased the oil and gas truck traffic on county roads. Whereas this heavy and increased truck traffic has literally destroyed many county roads, creating major safety hazards for the public, and whereas Texas counties are dependent upon property taxes and have no additional sources of funding to repair the increased damage in the oil and gas truck traffic, and whereas immediate additional funding assisting is required by counties to provide safe county roads, protect the public, and prevent further deterioration of the county road system, and the counties recommend that state consider using revenues from the additional severance taxes generated to increase oil and gas activity in issue of the Eagle Ford Shale County. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Commissioners Court of Wilson County, Texas requests that the Texas Transportation Commission and the Legislative Budget Board convene an emergency session to identify and provide additional assistance to Texas counties to repair, rehabilitate, and maintain the county road system being deteriorated by the increased oil and gas truck traffic in South Texas. Mr. Gomes, Mr. Fowles, all in favor?
Aye.
So, I could say to the public, people don't understand, they think because it is out of oil well, out of oil activities, the county's getting rich off of it, but we're not, just to let people know, you know, it takes a while before you see any kind of return, but before that, you're out there having a lot of expense.
And in reality, when you do see those returns, it'll be the people that will represent it, not the county government, because we can only raise our budget eight percent from previous year, no matter what our problems are, unless we are subject to a go-back election if we do otherwise, so.
And that, quite frankly, just covers the growth of our county here, and it's been growing so quickly, so. We have the potential of a major problem. Judge, where does our, our representative, Mr. Campbell, stand on this issue, do you know?
I think most of them, without plenty of pressure, most all of them are against it, because the state severance taxes is, they're looking to feather their nest in a way that they can, so I, I can't speak for them, but I would, I would say that probably it's gonna take a lot of pressure from all of the counties in order to, to gain it, because the state has sharp falls, and they're, they're looking for any source they can get also, so.
It would probably, then, it would cause us as commissioners to individually contact both our state senator and our state representative and voice our.
But that is my opinion, I, 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 no one's saying anything.
Thank you, sir.
Item fourteen, discuss approved two thousand thirteen, fourteen county judicial commission appointment to the Texas Judicial Commission. Okay, I'll just go down the list the way it's written here, and we have Shirley Grammer, then we have remove, to remove Harry Grove, Frank Hayden, Viola Hinkie, Maureen Lyles. Do you write all of that? Oh. Slow down, if you're.
I, I.
Jean Mackel, Royal Monroe, Lawana Nunez Lewis, Steve Robbie, Cambria Reed, Elaine Stevens, Nancy Traeger, Lois Wasson, remove Ulla Wilson, add Dolores Rios, and add Alan Cassup. Can you, can you redo that?
We'll have a.
Motion, Commissioner Wiley, second. Commissioner Morales, all in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen, discuss and take action on enlisting Russell Wilson for guiding and reviewing public hearings in contrast on the building process that has been started.
Does on that one, or fifteen, and I don't think there's another one, I don't know.
I could've seen one.
Five D, I don't know where the, we have to go.
They want five D?
No.
Well, that's, that's, since Russell's here, let's go back up and take five, that made it.
I don't know, I just wanna see, we can go into executive session for, does it, employee employment or this?
Okay. Well, let's, let's, let's do the rest of his items, and then we'll get to that one. Item five, consider and take action on amending recreational vehicle park regulations to make fire hydrants requirements closer to those in beast housing park regulations.
On A and B, Commissioner Snow, I think we already have them about the same, we're looking at just adding one provision that says that one hundred percent of the units have, have a road fromage within five hundred feet of a fire hydrant, but we're, we're working on doing one thing, it'll be on the agenda, and I'll make sure it's on there with the language notes the next time, where we can do subdivisions in both of these at the same time. And I think everything is the same except for that one phrase about within one hundred percent of the units within five hundred feet of a fire hydrant, so we'd like to just table that, and I will get all the other languages put on there, make sure that we have it for all three of them, one hundred percent, we want to make sure that we're not paying catch-up anything.
Okay, you want to table A and B, provide it in on the.
Yes, sir.
Item C, consider and take action on amended permits for all type of oil and gas mine in county right-of-way, include waiver of right under the state itself to save the bill, to make county pay for costs associated with maintenance and construction operation for the pipelines in county right-of-way.
Okay, and what this is, is we already have it in one of our permits, there's your permit, and we have your sec that we want to leave for permits that y'all don't have to grant. I discussed that with him, I'll take it totally the other way around just a minute ago. On page seven, I added in LL, the Health and Safety Code says, for each type of natural gas facility, and by facility they mean pipeline, whether it's a utility pipeline or not a utility pipeline, once it's there in the county right-of-way, if the county wants to do even routine maintenance over top of it, you're supposed to notify the company about it in advance, and this is in addition to big tax thing, and if they say that you have to put up fortifications or barriers or anything, you, the county has to bear the cost of that. On this kind of pipeline, we can always tell them, get your pipeline out, you've got thirty days to get out of there right-of-way. But just to make it clear that y'all don't have the obligation to do this, this says that they're waiting their right notice of routine maintenance. I think that if you're out there digging ditches, yeah, you need to get in touch with them, if you're just paving the road, you're supposed to vary it deep enough that that's not gonna be an issue, and if they come up with some kind of additional safety measures that they think they need to keep their pipeline safe, they need to pay for it, you know. There's a case out of Travis County where Travis County didn't have a way, and they spent several hundred thousand dollars on having had like a thirty-inch, fifty-inch natural gas pipeline that they were.
So what this does, Texas County.
Texas, yeah, yeah.
It says that for over time, every time you go out there.
Theoretically, every time you, you make a road, you're supposed to.
With this, you don't have to.
Motion, Mr. Gomes, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioners Court reserves the right to go into executive session pursuant to section five, five, one, zero, seven, one, to the section five, five, one, point zero, seven, six, to the section of the government's rule. This time we go into executive session at nine thirty-eight, and ask that the auditor is ready, and that's first, and county attorney. All in favor? Item D of five and fifteen, I see, item D of five and item fifteen are basically the same, and we just put on the agenda twice. Consider and take action on engaging attorney Russell Wilson. Consider take action on engaging attorney Russell Wilson to advise or represent the commission's court regarding construction activity of courthouse, and the courthouse NX three, which includes all of this property that NX three sets on, is your motion to approve? Commissioner Wiley, second, and you can file all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item sixteen, discuss and take possible action on contract with HTS telephone maintenance for the county.
This came up when we were having some problems with the fax lines to the police and our offices down there, and we've had HTS come out and take a look at them and do some repairs on them, and Dawn thought we could ask them to possibly give us a contract on, just like they do for our computers, on servicing our phone system, they have sent us a contract, and I apologize, I didn't make a copy of it for everybody, but y'all take a look at it, basically, they will service our telephones, of course, if anything breaks or they have to replace it, it will be in our cost, they will do minor repairs, that sort of thing, but their contract price is at nine hundred and seventy dollars a month. Their bill on fixing the fax machine this last time was fourteen seventy. I talked to Dawn about it, she and I both agreed that we made it a little high to have for our telephone contract, we haven't had a lot of problems with our cell phone services, that was kind of a first time thing, and we were pushed up against the wall, we needed our fax machine fixed, so we called them and they fixed it. I would like to have the commission to maybe contact a few other people about doing that, the sheriff has recommended to the people that do his contract over at the jail, and he says they're very reliable and very good, so I'd like to contract them, contact them as well before we make any decisions on that.
And I'm agreeing with you, that sounds for a contract, and that sounds for.
It seems a little high.
Well, it's over eleven thousand dollars, that's when you run the numbers compared to fourteen hundred.
Exactly.
If we're having regular problems, then it makes sense, if we're not.
And we really haven't had a lot of problems other than that, and that was basically an issue of equipment gone bad, so I'm not sure we need a phone contract, it'd be nice to have somebody that we could call when a situation arises so that they'll get out here and get something done, and what I thought about doing was actually calling these other people, it's Switchtext, and have them come down, maybe take a look at the system and see if they would be interested in just coming on a as-needed basis.
Well, while we're speaking about that, Dawn, she's only two days off now, but she's taken on her own help to kind of work with phones and all this, and she does a good job of it, she took some criticism when the fax was down from the people, that was unjustified, and it needs to be understood that if somebody else wants that job, it's available to them.
I can't see my jumping.
You know, the wires, I mean, the computers, you have to keep updated, and once you pull the wires, they work.
On phone system?
On the phone system, yeah.
It's just a matter of, you know, there are gonna be pieces of equipment around that.
Okay, item seventeen, Leanne Holschek, MC, item A, two thousand seven, and six SP, and WPR, A P, grant review and approve payment to motor road salute and corporate rates, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, one hundred seventy-two thousand, fifty-eight cents.
That is invoice for our dispatch upgrade project, which will be fully reimbursed with a home security grant, and given the large amount, that's why I put it on the agenda, and then I don't know where you want the funds to come out of.
Should we pay it and then we're reimbursed?
Right, yeah, we're reimbursed, once I have a paid invoice and a copy of a check that already went through the bank, then I submit it for reimbursement, now, it's gonna take at least two months, if not longer, I don't know how far behind the state is, before we would get the reimbursement, sometimes where I used to would take it out of my civil preparedness, that's where our flood plain money goes.
Could we tell you how pretty she is?
He has money.
All this stuff for money, I thought it was.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's gonna have to come out of the general, because even in civil preparedness, you don't have it.
Okay.
We'll just leave that decision to the auditor.
Okay.
Okay, whatever.
Coming out of holes.
Well, can I get it back with interest?
Are they gonna guarantee that you're any back to state law?
I have nothing to do with that.
Review and approval, leaving it up to the auditor's motion, Commissioner Gomes, second, Commissioner Morales, all in favor?
Aye.
Item B, review and approve pipeline crossing permit number two oh one, Hunt Oil Keller Facility in Patrick, Mississauga.
This is increasing to all that.
They did the renewal of the district, they ran out, they ran out before they got it put in, and they came back and.
Motion, commission, file, second, commission, Wiley, all in favor. Item E, payrolls and personnel change. Is it ready?
Not yet.
We haven't voted on it, Judge.
Okay, I have, well, Cleophas Castillo resigned twelve sixteen, two thousand and twelve, Department four twenty correction officer, Michael Lowe was terminated twelve seventeen, two thousand and twelve, Department four twenty, as a correction officer, Rosalie Bailey resigned twelve twenty-one, two thousand and twelve, Department four twenty, as the assistant jail administrator, Diana Lopez resigned twelve twenty-one, two thousand and twelve, Department four twenty, as a dispatcher, Christina Quintanilla will be resigning twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twelve, Department three twenty, county attorney secretary, Donald Stevens will be resigning twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twelve, Department four eighty, as constable of precinct two, and Russell Wilson will be resigning as of twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twelve, Department three twenty, as county attorney.
Motion, Commissioner Wiley, second, commission, file all in favor?
First of all, we're waiting for bills to get by Maggie and under them, I just want to thank Mr. Wilson for his service and for all the assistance that he's given me through my time, appreciate it. And for the tomatoes.
I'm one of the few women on the planet that can kill an idea, and those trucks, that's why my chaperone is still sitting in the county pen.
Russell raises, he can go with him, but he's a little bit angry.
I hate to run off, but when I came here this morning, I didn't let the dog enter their pen, the little overnight pen, so they probably didn't know.
Hi, Sylvia, just sitting around there, is she on her way over here? It's wrong. Yeah, we called the auditor's office, but she didn't answer, you think she's on her way? Oh. Yes, please. She was at your office. Sorry.
She was there?
Yeah, she was there. Is she at the door? I hope so. No, we're gonna have to move this guy.
I think two times cookies over there, anybody? Sunny bars, I meant to be cookies. I'm reading how late it's gonna be.
Well, it's not bad, it's hot. I just can't see.
So it's just a ring, it's just push in, so you get it all, all of it?
Something viewed this year, Jesus Christ, the light shows.
Oh, sure, I'll put it on there. I'll put it on.
I sent out a notice called by people, someone, a wife picked it up on Facebook, and you wanted to do that on Facebook, and somebody, we called someone.
That's what, I think that's what they were saying.
Maybe it's a journal.
He looks so cute, though.
And maybe try to set off the story like we're just getting started.
Sandy Oaks, I'll put it over there, and after I'm out, I'll try to put in like one twenty-three, you like it?
No, I don't know, two eighty-one. I'm just like.
That's law more out there. You just think about your day, you're gonna be Sandy Oaks.
That's how they are, they're called, po' cats.
Sandy Oaks was under a contract with the ESD.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is that Bobby Westell?
With one of our ESDs?
No, no, they have.
Sandy Oaks. I couldn't remember if it was Bear County or if it was out on one twenty-three, or whatever, he said that.
All right, appreciate it, give me that. I haven't been there yet. I'm the last I moved the cat around, that's where I got the question.
Remember you said you get out of rain or you don't need no fire, you don't have a fire?
I'm like, you have a phone.
I'm ready.
This guy worked.
Day and night.
Yes, sir, thank you.
You probably.
No fighting fires.
Remember you said you get out of rain or you don't need no fire, you don't have a fire?
What kind of meat is that?
How do you mince your meat?
It doesn't matter, it can be ranch or.
Just minced.
That's a nice.
Gets her all of her cookies back, she's like, how come nobody buys cookies?
Everybody had an opportunity to review the bill? Motion, Commissioner Gomes, commission, file all in favor, and item clean, we turn.